You can find out more about the Best Friends Animal Society at bestfriends.org. The 4th Annual Paella Festival at Pershing Square was a big hit with local foodies. The festival did themselves with a single paella dish, large enough to feed 3,000 hungry attendees. Take a look.
We have an amazing party with more than 40 chefs cooking paella, more than 30,000 paella plates, and also the flamenco dancing is amazing, and five local bands enjoying a really good Spanish party.
So here, I'm competing in the festival of paella winning fest, the Valencia Paella, so the winner gets to go to Spain for the world championship. I just came back from the world championship in September 2018, so I'm looking to qualify again for 2019. Paella started off as a peasant's dish, done with rice and vegetables, because those were the primary ingredients over there in Valencia. The thing about the paella is people forget that the protagonist of the paella is the rice. So you get the flavor of the rice from the ingredients, the chicken, the rabbit, the green beans, you have the tomatoes.
We're very happy to be here, looking forward to coming the next year and more years to come in the city of L.A. They're doing a great job bringing all these people to Los Angeles, they bring up their culture, their food and the wine, and it's something amazing.
L.A. is Latino, and we feel that they can identify with this cultural and culinary event. Everybody loves paella.
Local heroes are honored at City Council for Veterans Day. Karen Price leads a community safety event, and Rancho San Diego Park gets a new look. We've got you covered with City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council showed us appreciation for members of our armed forces on this Veterans Day. Each city council district recognizes a Veteran of the Year. Angelitos who went away to serve in our military, then returned and continue to be of service in their local communities. The Veteran of the Year ceremony, an ongoing tradition for the past several years, is designed to show L.A.'s youth that there is appreciation and value in making personal sacrifices for the greater good.
They need to know that we respect and appreciate those who serve our community.
Councilmember Karen Price recently attended a community meeting in South Park. The council member is interested in bringing Community Safety Patrol and other beneficial programs to the area. The LAPD is already providing local community youth services. The Community Safety Patrol, also known as CSP, is designed to build a street-level network between all local citizens and neighborhood police. Their aim is to make residents and police more comfortable working together, and we have a fabric of acceptance and understanding that will continue to make the neighborhoods safer and more pleasant for everyone. City officials in the Department of Recreation and Parks recently broke ground on a series of major upgrades in Rancho San Diego Park. $40 million is being invested to bring a world-class gymnasium and indoor swimming pool to local residents who enjoy the park. One important fact, with the roof full of its own solar panels, the gym is classified as a net-zero building, which means it uses no power from the city's electric grid. The park grounds are also being sustainably engineered to collect stormwater runoff for other uses.
These new facilities are gonna be exceptional, and we're really looking forward to the day this, we open this project.
Are you excited for the 2028 Olympics coming to Los Angeles? I am. Los Angeles got a little taste of the games when we were honored to receive two Olympic torches from Pyongyang. Check it out.
You are about to witness the passing of the Olympic torch, one that has already seen Olympic glory. Members of the 2018 Pyongyang Paralympic sled hockey team from the Republic of Korea visited the LA-84 Foundation, which helps train young future athletes. The team donated not one but two Olympic torches from the recent Games, an Olympic and a Paralympic torch.
It's a nice morning to start out and celebrate sport and youth and fun and bridging two communities.
That is exactly what happens on this planet at every Olympic and Paralympic Games. You guys bring the world together.
The team, by the way, was a bronze medalist in the Paralympic Games. For many here, the Republic of Korea's gesture holds special meaning, since L.A. will also hold both the Olympic and Paralympic Games here in 2028.
The Pyongyang Olympics successfully realized the value of the Olympics, including the participation of North Korean delegation and the inter-Korean women's ice hockey team.
Whether you're able-bodied or whether or not you have limitations of what your body can do, it's still the same thing. It's a, it's a, it's a bright, it's a brightness of the spirit to watch athletes go compete.
It brings the world together in ways that even the United Nations could never achieve, and that was represented even in these past Olympic Games when North and South Korea hockey players skated together on the ice for the first time. Really touching moments.
The LA-84 Foundation doesn't just help promote the Olympics, it's part museum, part learning center, and it has one of the largest collections of Olympic torches, 55 of them, including the 1994 Lillehammer Torch, one of the largest torches ever.
So having an opportunity to see a torch up close and maybe even hold it is kind of a magical moment.
That's gonna do it for this edition. I'm Umeen Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Want this soup, heat this ring? Had to work hard. This is not any street money whatsoever. I earned all this. The lifestyle I lived was absolute madness, chaos, a life in the streets, a strive to always want to commit a crime, guess to live that day. My wake-up call in my darkest moment would have to be seeing a lot of my boys go to jail. Last year, April, I made it up in my head that I wanna live an honest life, so I walked into the DPSSS office. They gave me the internship through Higher L.A. Youth, and that's where it all started. I am Steven Mason. I am a part of the Higher L.A. Youth Job Program, and it made me who I am right now, standing here talking to you today.
If you're in an accident, just stay. Call 911. Help if you can. You might save someone's life.
Obey the rules of the law.
To be able to give back to a community in which I was born and raised.
I wanted to be involved with how city government is reaching out to its residents.
Because of diversity, the ability to interact with people from all walks of life.
It is so large and diverse, it gives you such a variety of opportunities.
When the constituents come out to thank us and show their gratitude after we are done repaving the streets.
Being in public service, interacting with the community.
Things that I do on a daily basis really contributes positively to the community as a whole.
Getting to know your community, giving back to the community, not wanting nothing to return, and to know what I feel and understand what I'm feeling, you just have to be a part of it.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo, and you're watching Channel 35, Your City, Your Channel.
Where's my script for council? Make sure I have to... Good morning. Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take a seat, please. Today is Wednesday, November 21st. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blue Midfield, Bana, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harastason, Riza, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves. Harastason seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, and Rue seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, due to the upcoming council recess, would you like to send all items forth with today?
Yes, I would. Okay, without objection, yes, I would. So let's walk through the agenda.
Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing. Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Item 1 be received and filed due to a change in property ownership.
Okay, so, so order, do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all six items.
Okay, continue.
Items 7 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Planning and Land Use Management Committee report for Item 1 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the ordinances for Items 8 and 9 will be held over one week to November 28th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you.
Items 25 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before this body.
And there are cards on all items.
All right, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to call for Mr. Englander. Good morning, Mr. President and members. Today is a first. Today is Pet Adoption Wednesday, not Friday. So what we have with us today is a Chihuahua mix named Lucy. She's about nine, 10 weeks old. She's ready to go, she's got her shots and all of that. We don't anticipate that she will get much bigger than this. Now look at that face. Anyway, she's, um...
She might get a little bit bigger.
She might get a, in fact, Arlene here say...
We're not quite sure what her mix is, but look at these paws. So she's gonna be a medium-sized girl, so she's gonna be a little bit bigger.
So she was mixed with a large Chihuahua, okay? That's what happened. It's a big Chihuahua. Anyway, she's ready to go, and what we're gonna do, Arlene has been with us many years helping me try to find homes for these beautiful dogs that we have, and we have a 100% adoption rate, so we'd like to keep that going. So if anybody is watching this on television and you'd like to adopt Lucy, please call the number on your screen, or you can come, if you're in City Hall, don't hesitate to come downstairs. We're gonna have Arlene and Lucy stay around for a little bit. If you're interested, call 888-452-7381. If you want unconditional love, I've got a feeling that little Lucy here can, will be in a position to give it to you. Again, like I said, we do have a 100% adoption rate, and we'd like to keep that rate going. If you would like Lucy and by chance someone else adopts her, don't, don't be too upset. We have shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles that have a lot of Lucys and other types of animals. You're welcome to go visit and find the companion animal of your dreams. So anyway, I would like to, I'm gonna, Arlene, we're gonna count on all of your skills and abilities and have you walk Lucy around for a little bit and see if we might be able to find Lucy a home today. Now, do they get to keep this very chic?
Of course, of course.
Uh, uh, her leopard, uh...
Fancy.
Her leopard towel, wrap, blanket. All right, so thank you.
Lucy is probably the cutest puppy so far, not to say the others weren't, but that, so I think, I think we might have an interest over here, even at the horseshoe, with, uh...
She's a deer.
I know Nuri's really eyeballing her over there. I think, I think, I think Nuri's really considering, thinking about this.
Well, I think...
So let's just pause for a moment, let's give her a second to contemplate this, this decision.
So, Mr. President, we're gonna have Arlene go stand next to Nuri, and if somebody would please get on the phone and call Nuri's little daughter Izzy, and we'll make this really tough for Ms. Martinez. So anyway, let's, anyway, if you're looking at us on television or listening, come down to the council chambers. Let's make sure that we ensure that you have a happy Thanksgiving, and let's find Lucy a home. Okay, so I'd like to ask Cater, Cater Lee and, and your crew to join me. Peter and the gang, come on up. Just come on.
All right.
I want everybody.
Come on.
Everybody now, come on. Ms., Ms. Rodriguez. So before we get started with this presentation, I think what we'll do, Ms. Rodriguez, is let's kick it off with a video, so if you could cue the video and let it roll.
Spectrum News in Southern California introduces an innovative approach to 24-hour local news and information. The network provides in-depth reporting and original content that addresses the diverse interests and needs of the communities it serves. News from a new perspective, Spectrum News One.
Let's give a round of applause for Spectrum, Spectrum News One. You know, members, the more informed about what's going on, our constituents are, the residents of the city, the more informed that they are, I believe that it makes our job easier. So I'm here today to welcome Spectrum News One, because they're gonna be a brand-new 24/7 news station in the city of Los Angeles. So they will be covering things that happen in Sacramento and Washington, and literally things that happen on Main Street, right here in City Hall. Some of you have already done interviews with them, I know that I have. They're, they're very excited about this new... this new launch. They're very excited about connecting with the residents of our great city. And we have with us today, and I'm going to ask you to please give them a round of applause. Let's give the VP, Cater, Cater Lee, a round of applause. She's right behind me. Kirsten Lago, give her a round of applause. I think we saw you in the video. Paul is the cameraman. Give Paul. Nobody gives love to the cameraman. Give Paul. Paul. Stacy is behind me. Stacy. And my dear friend, Peter Hidalgo, give them another round of applause. So these are, and I say this with respect, the new kids on the block, the innovative kids on the block. And I really have a strong belief that they're going to be an asset to the city of Los Angeles. Like I said, somebody has to recognize that there's a responsibility to deliver information to the people in this city, and they have taken on that task, and I'm certain that they will do well. Joining me today is our colleague, Monica Rodriguez. Monica, why don't you come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am delighted to join you in this presentation today in celebration of this new outlet that is going to be instrumental in communicating to our communities all the great work that happens in our neighborhoods that too often gets overlooked. I think at a time right now when we have this hyper-focus on some of the negative news and occurrences that happen, that really just kind of, we get bombarded with every single day, this vehicle, this channel, is going to be instrumental in helping to tell some other stories of what's happening in our communities. The progress that we're making on homelessness, the work that is being done as it relates to some of the community leaders that are so instrumental in being partners with us to help change the way city government operates. They are going to help tell the other parts of the stories that too often get overlooked. And I think at a time when we are constantly inundated in our news with some of the negative stories, these are some of the coverages that are going to help communicate all of the other work that is happening every single day in our neighborhoods so that we can assure that our public is even more engaged in making sure that they can be partners with us to help do the work that they are asking for. And so I'm grateful that Spectrum is investing in this kind of effort to help make sure that we are covering the full breadth of activities that are happening in our city and across this country, because that is what residents need, that is what constituents need to help engage in local government activities, and to help assure that we are also utilizing this important vehicle as a means to communicate some of the important resources that they need to access more regularly. There's so many policies and activities that we engage here, engage in on a regular basis, that we want to see more folks taking advantage of. And I think this is going to be a critical part of how we assure that the residents of Los Angeles in particular have a more accessible government here for them so that they can be more aware of the resources that we are presenting and putting forward. So I thank you, Mr. President, for bringing them forward. And again, thank you, Spectrum, for this incredible work, because I, you know, as I mentioned to you, there will certainly be no revoking of press passes here. We are very excited and delighted to have you here in council and, more importantly, sharing a broader story of the occurrences that happen in our neighborhoods every single day. Thank you so much for your work.
All right. And Monica, so that means I can get a press pass?
You're under review.
Serious review. And they will also be covering our dog adoptions, okay? And just to brag a little bit, we have been responsible for finding homes for over 150 dogs. And when you factor in Mr. Coretts's cats, I think that we've done a pretty good job in trying to find homes for our four-legged friends. At this point in time, I'd like to bring up to say a few words the VP, Cater Lee. Let's give Cater a round of applause.
By the way, just an update, Mr. President. The dog has been adopted.
All right, all right.
And it is, it is, it is going to Monica's office. Not to her, but to one of her staff members. And so let's give them a round of applause.
Oh, my God, yeah!
Fran. And Nuri has weekend visitations. All right.
So our 100% adoption rate still lives.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations. That little puppy is hard act to follow. Lucy is the cutest thing I've ever seen. So congratulations, and congratulations on keeping your adoption rate at 100%. That's wonderful. So Council President Wesson and members of the Los Angeles City Council, it is our great honor to accept this recognition of Spectrum News One. I am so proud to be working for a company that is devoted to investing in local journalism, impactful storytelling, and original programming focused on our neighborhoods and our communities. We have a team of multimedia journalists that are embedded in the rich neighborhoods they cover, covering issues like local politics, affordable housing, the environment, education, the issues that matter to Angelenos at such a critical time in our society. So once again, thank you so much for this honor on behalf of Stacy Mitch, Kirsten Lago, Peter Nankavell, Paul Nankavell, sorry, Paul, and Peter Hidalgo. We appreciate this recognition on behalf of Spectrum News One, and we thank you very much for this special honor.
My pleasure. Let's give them another round of applause, especially the cameraman. So if I could get Monica to join me, we'll put you in...
Put you in the middle of the room, sir.
Okay.
And you guys, come on, just get in.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and go into multiple speaker cards on the agenda. Herman, come on up. While he's making his way up, we're going to go ahead and consider items reconsider eight and nine. Let's go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on eight and nine.
Reconsideration?
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll go ahead and take up item eight and hold item nine. So item eight, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Okay, we'll hold nine on the desk for now. Armando, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, in regards to multifamily and the prior presentation, you heard about homelessness, you heard about the activity of how bonds provide families with homes. The issue and obligation of the city is to manufacture and provide housing. But the stock of housing has taken a deep leap due to the FBI investigation of development. But in good terms, because of design and development and construction, we will stop the padding of politicians' monies when it comes to development and construction. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. So issuing one or more series of revenue bonds or other obligations of principle, and for the record, I believe Mr. Fabel is not circumcised. But back on topic, not to exceed the purpose of finance...
If you go off-topic, then, Daniel, forfeit your time.
To improve and equip the city, we do not meet this pattern in practice. Now, going back to Mr. Englander on items 28, 29, and 30, as I munch them together, regarding commerce, regarding community foundation, and all the corrections and clarification that the fifth-place loser last day today with us shall be for an additional Granada Hills pool. Now Lindsay and Lauren can play in the pool, along with recreational parks departments that will make all corrections accessible under the American Disability Act for seniors, vets, and, more importantly, the disabled. So relative to restraining or retaining the reward, fuck you. 42 U.S.C. 1983. No one's life should be a part of a reward. No person in America should have to die in this horseshoe because you make up rules and you lie. So no one's life should be valued at 50,000. It should be valued at a million. Without that, fuck you too, white niggers. So as you heard in the deliberation that Mr. Weezar's released from federal jail on Monday, as you see, my elected official is not represented to push a button and correct me, I am very happy to know that Mr. Weezer got away with murder. Mr. Weezer, the developer czar, is down. The clown is down. Why is that? Where's Felipe Fuentes? Where's Michelle Englander? And where is Jose Weezer? Well, eh, buttons up, fools. You're busted. And the FBI is going to investigate why Mr. Dawson ejected me from a public meeting without allowing me to suppress my opinion. So in other words, fuck you too, Mr.
Wayne, come on up. Stick to the topics.
You mean Mr. Fabel's uncircumcised? Anti-Semitic. So number one, fuck you on your lien on 1A. We don't need Corin Price. The big mess to give liens on South Long Beach, even though? Fuck that. The FBI opposes this lien. Then we get to the street lighting. And number four, number four is the jailbird Jose Weezer trying to impose lighting districts illegally. Under federal law, he cannot do so. He is not here. Why? The reason is because he's back in jail again. Yes. So now, number four. And number five, fuck Jose Weezer again, trying to do lighting district Colorado Boulevard. Colorado in Spanish means red. It means red ink. Yes. And that's why you have to steal to pay this fucking lighting district. Then number six, we get to the Porky Pig of Anise, Nuri Martinez, and we say no to her lighting district because why? Because the DWP has offered to provide these free streetlights on their pools. But Nuri doesn't give a shit. No, she wants to impose the lien on the poor helpless white taxpayer or property owners because she says, fuck you gringos. And that's not good. Now we have maps, filthy, ugly, dirty, corrupt maps. Shame on Monica. Shame on 37B for stealing. Monica, mommy, we relied on you and you failed. You'll be joining Jose Weezer if you continue. Then we have number C, Weezer, no, no, I'm sorry, Coretts. Coretts, that fat fucking pig from Encino. No to this goddamn lien. The South Beverly Green Drive. The map looks like shit. The fees are too low. But again, that's because Paul Peppa Pig Coretts is a big fat slob. Then we have the Los Angeles Futures Communities. There is no future if you live in LA. When you live in LA, you die in LA, like the fucking song. Need to live in LA, then you're going to get convicted in LA. So we say no to that shit.
So the one minute, and a thank you to my colleague here.
No, thank you, sir.
Is where we're playing the drinking game is Jose Weezer. Well, we know his nervous friend Marquis Harris Dawson is by his chair looking for the missing cellphone. You see, there's a cellphone that's missing, and the FBI can't find one of the cellphones from Jose Weezer's district office. Where did it go? Jose's didn't destroy it. Who's got it? Could it be in the first district? Could it be near the Arroyo Seco? You see, I know where the phone is. So if you want to know where the phone is, ringy dingy. Fuck you all. Jose Weezer's a punk.
Antonio, Antonio, come on up.
Thank you. Next year, we'll bring the fall from grace for all these politicians sitting right here in this horseshoe. The fall from grace will be the mayor and the politicals for political...
You need to stay on the agenda items, or we're going to go right into general public comment. That's going to be your only warning. Thank you.
The fall of the city of Los Angeles mayor and politicians and council members and city attorneys will go down for political and official malfeasance.
Okay, go ahead and start her one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Having said that, again, the fall of the city of Los Angeles political here at City Hall. Why? They have committed obstruction of justice. They've committed homelessness. They brought homelessness into the city of Los Angeles. Middle-class America's homeless. Happy Thanksgiving. And oh, when you sit in your tables, you will remember us. We're sitting on the streets, eating a bowl of turkey or enchiladas or tacos. But I...
Okay, excuse me for one moment. Sergeants, please escort Mr. Herman out of the chambers for disrupting this meeting. We'll hold your... We already stopped your clock, ma'am. Absolutely, Mr. Miras. Sergeants, please escort Mr. Herman out for Armando's disrupting this meeting once again. We're going to wait until you escort it out. Armando, go now. Go now. Don't yell out. You're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. Goodbye.
So, just to make this clear on the record, because the cameras may not have caught it, Mr. Herman was jumping up a whole bunch of times. It wasn't some fleeting gesture. It was constant motion, which was an obvious attempt to distract the members from focusing on the speakers. He succeeded, and now he's surprised that he's being kicked out for it. And, and he's shouting the entire way out, as usual, keeping us from being able to continue the meeting. And he's still shouting.
Okay, Mr. Miras, we'll start your clock again.
Thank you. Next year, we will see most of them go to prison. And we want to thank the Philippine president Rodrigo Duterte to come to America and kill all the junkies and wetbacks and gangbangers, and Vladimir Putin to come into America and kill the FBI, the CIA, the NSA, and Homeland Security and fry those turkeys. And I want to say happy Thanksgiving to all my military aviators and the United States military, my Gillespie Daredevil pilots extraordinaire, and my LAPD officers, Gracianno Morris, Martinez, and Gira Motos.
Thank you. Your time is up. Would like to now bring up Mr. Red Chief again. Come on up. Mr. Miras, you're disrupting this meeting. Thank you. Mr. Hunt, if you want to come on up. Mr. Hunt, if you want to come on up.
I am the Red Chief Hunt. I am the First Amendment expert here. I want to talk about number one and the liens against in current price district. Current, I'm getting a lot of complaints about a lot of stuff that's going on in your district and they trying to get me to exit out of there. And you probably need to see a lot of people, but liens against African-Americans for twenty-five-hundred dollars need to cease. It's Christmas time. I don't need no liens against African-Americans. Then I want to go into murderers. I want to talk about, I got ten thousand sworn officers and I can't, I'm still giving out fifty thousand dollar grants to catch a murderer? That just don't really add up to me. You know, when we hired Michael Moore, who's the chief of police, we did it with expectation. The expectation is that we will reduce the murder rate and get out of all of these rewards and stuff like that. So I want to see us try to go back to that and start reducing some of the, some of the rewards that's going out and putting that money back into the community, like for sidewalks and stuff like that, that needs to be embedded in over there on Fifty-Fifth and San Pedro and stuff like that. We're taking money and giving it away to find something, but not putting it back into our communities that really actually need it. And I'm still paying ten thousand sworn officers. And then on number eleven, I really want to get into the committee. I think anything for the kids is very good. And what you guys do is you guys give any donations or whatever to the kids. I think that's a commitment to society and upbringing and things like that. Now, what I really want to talk about, I really want to get into my public comment. You guys are making the same mistakes over and over and over again. The city of Los Angeles is making the same mistakes over and over again. And you guys continuously have to pay for them. Now that Weezer is gone and that he's no longer there, I can, I can get my agenda through. But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be this like this every four years. I'm getting my agenda through and being able to really come after you guys because you guys are not doing things in a correct form. So with that, I want to end it and I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. And I really want to say this, get your shit together. I am a Ninth Circuit winner and, you know, I don't like excuses. I, you know, you know, if you guys are going to be officiating for me, you guys go by the book, the Red Chief Hunt. Current price, I need to talk to you. Somebody wants to talk to you.
We have a request to reconsider item twenty-one. We'll go ahead and open the roll for the reconsideration of item twenty-one from Mr. Bonin. Reconsideration.
Yes, I'd like to reconsider it for the purposes of continuing until Tuesday.
Right, yeah. So we're going to open, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And then we'll go ahead and continue that item till Tuesday.
And that's November twenty-seventh.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much. All right, and with that, Dan, want to come on up?
Councilmembers, good morning. Daniel, Gus, I have the number one most-read article in City Watch today. Item number twenty-nine, Mr. Englander is going to spend eight million dollars on a swimming pool with Ms. Rodriguez's blessing. How many of the homeless veterans on Plummer Avenue by the VA facility could be housed with this eight million dollars? Eight million dollars to rebuild a pool instead of housing a hundred or so homeless veterans? Your priorities do not match your promises. There is a VA facility in the sixteen thousand one-one-one block of Plummer Avenue. There are tons of homeless veterans, but instead of using this eight million dollars to house those homeless veterans, you're going to build a swimming pool. Really shocking and disappointing. Item number thirty-one, Mr. Englander is using this money wise, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell to look for multifamily rental housing. I would hope that Mr. O'Farrell would take some of the homeless people under the Vermont Avenue overpass. There are people living in the middle of the one-oh-one freeway in Mr. O'Farrell's district or Mr. Rue's district, literally living on the center median of the one-oh-one freeway under Vermont Avenue. Maybe they will use some of this money to get those homeless people housed. Of course, they'll get housed if they're Latino. They will not get housed if they're African-American. That's how it works in the city. Blacks who are homeless do not get the services that Latinos who are homeless get. It's really sad. Item number thirty-two. Now, what exactly is PNYKA? Well, the program is what Mr. Wesson is using to get tax deductions for dinner parties in his home. And while the FBI and the IRS are investigating city council, they should look very closely at item number thirty-two. This is a program that will reimburse Mr. Wesson for parties he's using his own home to throw. Let me see what else I have here. Okay, I can go on to general public comment. As I mentioned yesterday, your floor council director, Justin Wesson, has, his voter registration shows that he's been using his mommy and daddy's home from two thousand eight to two-
That's not under the purview of this body. So you got to stick to items under the purview of this body. Yeah, he's not a council member. You got to stick to the purview of this body.
But you're a floor director!
Sorry.
I want my time back. You're interrupting my talking about criminal activity by your floor director.
Yeah, sorry.
Please give me the time back.
You have your time. You got to stick to items under the purview of this body.
You're interrupting me, your fucking floor director!
Okay, now you're, now you're using your time.
Mr. Fabel, Mr. Fabel, Mr. Fabel.
You still have your time. You can talk about anything that's under the purview of this body.
Mr. Fabel, your floor director is committing a crime and you're, you're fucking not letting me do it if you want me to file a major problem. You have a criminal activity by the council president's son who's employed by this guy and you're a-
Okay, so your time is up. Thank you very much. So your time is up. Next item, please. Disrupting this meeting. Dan, either sit down. Okay, sergeants, escort him and Mr. Hunt out. Escort them out. Mr. Hunt, you're out too. Disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, please escort both of them out. No, Mr. Hunt, you're disrupting this meeting. You're out.
Listen, Mr. Hunt, the fact that you don't like what's occurred does not mean you get to shout. Please leave. You've been ordered to leave. You have been ordered to leave by the presiding officer.
Sergeant, please show him and Mr. Gus out immediately.
Mr. Hunt, you have been ordered to leave. Excuse me? Are you threatening me?
Yeah, I think he was threatening.
I think you are.
I think he was. Sergeants, escort him out right away. And Mr. Gus as well. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Hunt, you're still disrupting this meeting.
You've been ordered to leave. Please do so now quietly. Sorry about that. I think we continue.
And Daniel Gus was also asked to leave for disrupting the meeting. So he needs to leave. Sergeants, please escort him out. Dan, you're just still disrupting this meeting now. You're continuing to yell out and disrupt this meeting, so you need, you need to, you need to leave as well. You've been asked to leave. You were disrupting this meeting. We've been waiting for you. We let you have your moment and your time. As long as you follow the rules, you warrant, you continue to talk afterwards, we've asked you to leave. Sergeants, please escort him out so we can continue this meeting. All right, Ryan Reza.
Thank you, President Protam, Englander. Honorable councilmembers, my name is Ryan Reza Farci. I'm speaking to you on behalf of a couple of different numbers this morning, specifically number twenty-seven. Again, this is an ongoing concern that I have with the city of LA, the state of California, the United States of America, is that we have a certain budget and we just continue to put more debt on everyone's back.
Okay, again, if you can, you fill out a number of-
Today's the budget for-
Hold this time for one second.
Number twenty-seven, sir.
Thank you very much.
Fifty-million-dollar bond you're exceeding, right?
Thank you.
Right? Number twenty-seven. A motion to, again, issue another bond on the taxpayers' back for fifty million in addition to the twenty-seven and a half million to get today to spending. That's, that's, what's the story of America, ladies and gentlemen? They have no intention of paying off the debt. I've read documents since nineteen seventy-one when we went off the gold standard. The issue is to just issue more debt, put more debt on our back and devalue the dollar. That's exactly what's happening here in America. Let's go to number thirty-one. That is another one for motion by, so usually the same people, Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Rodriguez. And then number twenty-seven was Mr. Wesson, Mr. Corretz. I'm glad, Mr. Corretz, you're here, but Mr. Wesson's not here. Where is he? He puts fifty million through the table and he's not here, Mr. Corretz. Isn't that disappointing? He should be here for his own motion. Let's go to number thirty-one. Twenty-three million by Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Rodriguez, in addition to the twenty-seven and a half million. Where do I get that twenty-seven and a half million-dollar budget? That's nine point nine billion dollars a year you guys get to spend, Mr. Englander. That's twenty-seven and a half million a day. Let's see, number twenty-seven is fifty million, number thirty-one is twenty-three million. And we got another one, number thirty-four. This is the beauty of this whole setup. I asked my dad, what's the purpose of government? He said, my dad's smarter than me. I'm going to be smarter than him in due time. He said, the purpose of government, Mr. Sidio, is to control the people and make money for your friends. Is that what you guys do? That's what your lawyers do. Since nineteen oh seven, they went around making rotarians in the wheel, the water wheel, controlling the water. Who does it? The attorneys, the state of Israel, the judges, the courtrooms. I'm having my one minute, right? September eleventh, nine eleven, two hundred and twenty floors on the Twin Towers. I'm a stockbroker, Payne Weber, UBS Payne Weber, Wedbush Morgan Securities. Why was JP Morgan Chase not in their thirty floors? No one tells you that. How come those thirty floors weren't there at work that day? What did they know? I'm at the Oregon Trail, ladies and gentlemen. The Oregon Trail is where I'm at. Last night I was speaking at the what? The Gathering of the Waters Incorporated in nineteen fourteen, the same year as World War One. They just don't tell you the truth in America, ladies and gentlemen. Our president knows who killed Robert Kennedy now, fifty years later, but we won't get to know. Actually, the president will see a redacted document thanks to city attorneys and attorneys all around Esquires. He sees a redacted document of what happened fifty years ago. So in two thousand fifty-one, the president will get to see what happened. Dear city clerk, I'm starting a new church and university for the union and the brotherhood of man working for all children. The best machine and the best factory is the human body, mind, and soul and spirit connection to establish through daily dose of motion. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. God bless America. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll see you soon, state of Israel.
Michelle.
Neil.
Is Michelle still here? Yes, there you are. Come on up, yes.
Yes, the tradition of taking, this is thanks-taking. The Europeans took the land from Native Americans. You're continuing to take away our right to freedom of speech. We need more time because one minute is not ample time to express one thought. These motions or the gestures that Mr. Armando was making are quite apropos because you are Zionist Nazi sympathizers. That being said, I also like to comment on the fact this is still a democracy. You're running this city as if it is an aristocracy, oligarchy, and if you claim that I'm off topic, then I'm going to concur with my colleagues and say that you are, no, because I have, I'm relative to-
I think these are things for general public comment. You got to stay on, okay, we could start your one minute for general public comment if you like.
Why they're claiming that you're anti-Semitic and that's why that they're insulting you because you're undermining, you're diminishing our two or three minutes. You have hours for your presentations and you're running the city as it is, as if it is an aristocracy. We have to force a democracy. There will be revolution in the street.
Ask you not to yell either.
You are illegal in violating this right that you have.
Don't yell in another microphone, please. Part of the rules.
The Jews are hiring the immigrants to attack us and we, I oppose that. I'm tired of being attacked by the maintenance to say that they're being rewarded and that they're under orders. I'm a black woman and I have a right to express this, the fact that that demographic is being used against black people. I'm tired of seeing more black people in the street and every working class entry-level position is filled by Hispanic person. The black people are predominantly, the demographic in Skid Row is black, okay? The penthouses and the plantations right there are the prisons and I'm not going there. More jobs for black people, housing for black people, poor people, and veterans. You've done enough for Hispanic people. We built this country. You people wouldn't even have America.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, please. Yeah, John Walsh, come on up. Ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting if you're not going to sit down.
And you can't kill me.
You're, you're, okay. You're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. Don't yell out again. Okay, ma'am, you know, you've been warned. You continue to yell out, disrupt this meeting. We're going to ask you to leave the chambers now. Sergeants, please escort her out. Still yelling out from the chambers. We have another public speaker. You're eating in his time. You're preventing this body from doing the public work. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. Sergeants, please help her out. Thank you.
And just in case we're not catching them, this mic, Ms. Autry is standing up in the audience shouting loudly enough that we cannot continue our business.
Walsh. Walking at HollywoodHighlands.org. Take a look at the agenda and we'll just dismiss the waste of money in the agenda and go to public comment. Where is Weezer? We know that three days ago, he was in federal detention. The Times covered up that story. Why did they cover up that story? Because the mayor has acute ass and he waves it at the gay-as-a-goose reporter, David Zanheiser, and David Zanheiser kills the story. The story has been killed about, look, there are no FBI agents here. Where are they? They're wherever Weezer is. If, I'm telling you right now that no one gives a shit, not one of these people, where Weezer is. Weezer has been arrested. He's been in federal detention. Everybody knows that, except the readers of the LA Times, because we have been the people who've talked about it. We have done it. Everything we said is true.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, John. Wayne, don't, you're disrupting this meeting again. Do you want to leave? All right.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. Today I'll be speaking on behalf of myself. I take note of the Hollywood Land Trust, I think, or the Sign Trust, sorry, the Sign Trust. It's up on the, you know, the Hollywood sign is an iconic bit of history. There's been some talk about getting tourists up there. This is thirty-seven thousand five hundred from Rue. It's in his district. And everybody remembers that there's some upkeep here. The question is, you know, what's the blend, the split between Chamber of Commerce, the city, and the private donors? You know, I do take note that we are doing some nice citation work up in there. We got the ACE program that Englander was celebrating up in Public Safety this morning, working effectively where I think Hollywood got possibly a thousand citations or six hundred, very high, very high. The highest was Hollywood. It was twelve hundred. Mr. O'Farrell is a very pernicious little guy when he wants to be, but I think it was Mr. Rue who was helping up there get people and cite people, which is what the neighbors want. That's why we've been doing a steady stream of enforcement up by the Hollywood sign. So thanks for that, I think. Now, the five thousand dollar for Granada Hills fair is certainly a paltry contribution from a man who's coughing up eight million for a park named after his mother-in-law. But I do think that the Sunshine Canyon landfill money has been flowing abundantly in the direction of Mr. Englander and his group. And is, frankly, an expensive swimming pool the right thing right now? I don't know. We're going to get an expensive gym upgrade that we didn't really need, but Mr. Krikorian and our team are trying to, you know, get what they can. Everybody is. Item thirty-two is Embrace L.A. This is a group, I think, certainly Busquets and Bonin will remember that Panika is the little tip of the hilltop in Greece, and there's a firm named that that takes money to help bring sides of an argument together who are opposed. So I think that is in connection with Mr. Wesson's, you know, that giant meal that people go to, that got mixed reviews in the Times, but certainly they spent a lot of money on great catering and put in a lot of treasured partners who don't always agree- of money on great catering and put in a lot of treasured partners who don't always agree. So that's always appreciated. Now, this, uh, this CD11 banner program, Bonin, great area, everybody loves the street banners, what an effective and modern way to communicate. But how much? And why do they never say how much? I think that it's the basic transparency piece to just say how much. I know it's not that much, but it's enough. And finally, I think it's great news that, um, that we're gonna have another local news channel. Can we talk about that, Mr. Fabel? Or in reduced size, we're not allowed to mention that. Did you hear that Spectrum One is gonna be starting a new local news channel? They even said for the rich neighborhoods. Uh, I don't know, do they mean the rich neighborhoods or the neighborhoods that are rich with the Tapestry of Life in LA City?
Yeah, your general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Monday was International Toilet Day, and we, we reached out to our neighborhood council. We had a whole meeting. Krikorian came down. He did a great job. He addressed some concerns. And there's something called a mobile pit stop program that you guys have approved several downtown. I know Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Price and Mr. Weezer know about it. And it's a great idea. It's a public toilet with an attendant. So we want one at the Red Line at Universal. So our treasured partners at Universal, Public Works, Kevin James spearheaded this program, Mr. Krikorian, and the Metro, LA Metro, are all gonna help, and we look forward to that. But they have to be responsive and move it forward. We'd love to get one installed fairly soon. It's a great area. Now, I also wanna thank Bonin and Coetz for being so patient with us because we do wanna talk about the campaign finance ordinance. And we have waited for Ebenstein and Chad Molner, the others, Mr. Gregory, to come up with a mutually convenient date where we can actually discuss campaign finance because it impacts everybody citywide, but in Studio City, we're taking leadership. We wanna talk about it. So thank you, sir.
Is there Ms. Claude still here? Ms. Claude? No longer here? Okay, thank you. Dennis Luna? Dennis still here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are, sir. Come on up. You get one minute for general public comment.
My name is Dennis Luna, and this is regarding item 22 in Council District 13, the Montecito Apartments. City council members, please oppose the Plumb Committee's amendment to separate the building from the entire property for historical status. The Cultural Historical Committee recommended both the building and the entire property historical status. This is consistent with both the federal and state's designation 33 years ago. Why should the city's designation be different? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Kathryn Larson? Oh, Kathleen, I'm sorry. Come on, come on, ma'am. Thank you.
Kathleen Larson, I follow on with Dennis Luna's comments. People want informed constituents. I bring you letters, and we have distributed the letters to your offices about what the people of the Montecito know about the historical situation, and they too oppose that unfortunate amendment where, um, Mr. O'Farrell was actually taken advantage of, in our opinion. So it's fine if you wanna rescind that. The other thing that you might have found is that we distributed something about CEQA. If CEQA was taken care of for this particular project, we would not have this. It is historical, and it should have gone with the proper under CEQA, and that's what we would recommend. Thank you.
Okay, that closes public comment and general public comment for the meeting, so thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and vote on item nine, so we can go ahead and, not on nine? Oh, did, did, um, Mr. Coetz, do you wanna speak on item nine?
I, I have a question, so I'd like to have staff come up to the table.
Okay, very well. We have staff here for item nine, please.
And for the record, Mr. President, amending motion 9A has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Not staff, but the general manager of the department is here in person. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and my question is, we seem to set an arbitrary and it would appear to me unnecessarily abrupt deadline for marijuana establishments to be able to move if they have that need. I know the state has set a, a deadline that also is impending at the end of the year, but giving people around a week's time with this council action seems sudden and abrupt and unnecessary, and if anything, just trying to catch a few people napping and not getting in their application quickly enough, and that doesn't seem to be something the city should be doing. So why are we attaching this unnecessarily abrupt deadline when the state would provide an additional month?
So, good morning, Councilmember Coetz. I appreciate the question. State agencies who are responsible for licensing and regulating commercial cannabis activity have let both local jurisdictions know and local applicants know that they will stop receiving requests for new state temporary licenses beginning December 1st. In order for us to effectuate the ability for these businesses to receive their state temporary license, we need to be able to process their requests prior to December 1st so that businesses don't get caught up in a lull where businesses are able to seek approval from the state to move and not be granted that ability before the end of the year.
So if the state in their law says January 1st, how can they arbitrarily decide December 1st?
I will pass it to my colleague Alex to explain further.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Alex Freeman, Deputy City Attorney. So the, the law says that the state agencies cannot issue licenses past December 31st. The state agencies have made the decision in their discretion that they need time to process applications before December 31st, so that is the deadline they have set. We cannot impact that. They are just not going to accept applications after the deadline they've set.
So the January 1st deadline isn't to, the state deadline isn't to accept it, it's to completely process them and approve them?
To actually issue the, the state law says that the agencies cannot issue a state temporary license after December 31st. So they need time to determine whether an applicant meets the requirements for a state temporary license, and they expect to be handling thousands of these.
Okay, now I understand that. So, so they've given themselves a month to process, so we're giving them essentially a week's warning that they need to get everything in, in time?
The applicants would've already had to have known that they needed to get their location determined for their state license by December 1st, so they were already operating under this expedited timeline, and this is just letting them know that they need to come to the city by November 3rd to get one piece of information they need for their state application, which the state has said, "Give us by that beginning of December."
And if they haven't been paying good attention, this would be sort of a last opportunity and another way for them to, to find out.
Yes.
Very good. Well, in that case, that makes a lot more sense than I thought, so we will be happy to support that.
And I, I do need to read some amendments, revisions to the city attorney's draft ordinances right now. On November 9th, we submitted four draft ordinances to amend the city's cannabis procedures. Yesterday, we transmitted two revised draft ordinances, and I just wanna summarize and read what those changes are. In the draft ordinance amending Article 4 of Chapter 10 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, in Section 25 of the draft ordinance, which creates a new Section 104.23 of Article 4 of Chapter 10, we have added a subsection C, which reads prohibited uses of emblem placard. It shall be a violation of this code for any person to display or use an emblem placard without authorization from DCR, or to use any placard symbol or rendering that is substantially or confusionly similar to an emblem placard. The other revision. So in this draft ordinance, City Council has requested that, for DCR to establish an emblem program. Okay. And so this was just to make sure that nobody can misuse that. The second revision to the draft ordinances is a revision to the ordinance amending Section 4, 45.19.7.2 of Article 5.2 of Chapter 4 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and this would be in Section 1 of the draft ordinance. At the end of the first paragraph, we've added two sentences that read, "An EMMD that requested an amended BTRC between October 19, 2018 and November 30, 2018 shall not be prohibited from operating at a new location approved by DCR on the condition that DCR shall not approve the request without first seeking and considering a recommendation from the city council member in whose district the EMMD is requesting to relocate. An EMMD that does not request an amended BTRC by November 30, 2018 may continue to operate only at the location on its current BTRC until such time that the EMMD receives a final response to its application for a city license for commercial cannabis activity being conducted at that location." That covers all the revisions in the city attorney's transmittals yesterday.
Okay, so with that, colleagues, what we're gonna do is we'll receive in File 9A, and then we'll need a motion to adopt the revised ordinance. I believe that's from Mr. Coetz, so we'll need a second. Okay, Mr. Price. And, and so, so moved, and then we'll go ahead and then open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
It's approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please. Okay, we can go ahead, colleagues, and take up items 1 through 6. We'll go ahead and open the roll on items 1 through 6.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Clarification for me, too.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Approved. Thank you very much. Next items, please. We have, I think, 25 through 37. Go ahead and open the roll on items 25 through 37. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell, did you, you wanted 31 to speak about, so we can go ahead and-
Reconsider 31.
Yeah, sure, not a problem. We'll go ahead and reconsider item 31 now. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That's now before us.
12 ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell, did you wish to speak on item 31?
And excuse me, Mr. President, an amending motion for 31A has been posted and circulated.
All right, that's been posted and circulated. You want a motion just to, oh, it's already circulated. We can go ahead and vote on 31A? Okay? No wishing, no wishing to speak on that item? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll, colleagues. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next items, please. All right, council has motions for posting referral. We'll go ahead and post or refer those. Do we see any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none? Do we see, I'm looking for adjourning motions. Do we have any adjourning motions? We do. If we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Excuse me for one second, before we start adjourning motions, Mr. Spindler's continued to make noises, particularly as we're beginning adjourning motions, that is not gonna be tolerated. Sergeants, please go ahead and escort him out. We're not gonna begin this and disrupt adjourning motions. Not gonna happen, Mr. Spindler. Go. Thank you very much. Yes, throwing you out because you're disrupting the meeting and squeaking and making little piglet noises, and I'm not sure which animal it's coming from. So you're dismissed. All right, Wayne Spindler is still taking his time and squeaking at the back of the council chambers, your little piglet noises. Again, not sure exactly where that's coming from, but thank you. He's finally leaving the chambers. Shh. We can, we can please give the floor to Mr. Rue for an adjourning motion. Thank you.
Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Herman Khangian. Her, Hermine, Hermine Khangian. Hermine was born in 1926 in Beirut, Lebanon. She was first born and the only girl of Manouk Araxi Tavitian. In adulthood, she moved to America and quickly became involved in issues for the local Armenian community. In 1946, she joined the Armenian Relief Society and met her future husband, Kirkin Khangian, an activist. They were married later that year. Together, they built a rich and warm life in America. They had three children, six grandchildren, and countless friends and neighbors who they cared for with warmth and generosity of spirit. In 8, in 1980, they both moved to Los Angeles and became involved in the Hollywood chapter of the Armenian Relief Society. Hermine was known as a voracious reader of historical and religious texts and a woman strong in her faith. She expressed love for her God through her kind and loving spirit, her immense devotion to her family, and her work supporting those less fortunate. She dutifully supported the Armenian Relief Society from 1946 until her passing this year. Hermine was also an excellent cook, known to cook elaborated delicious meals for her entire family. She is remembered by her family and her friends for her warm personality, her generosity, and her love and devotion in everything she did. She passed away in October at the age of 92 and is survived by her three children, six grandchildren, and many friends in the Armenian community and beyond. In lieu of flowers, her family asks that charitable donations may be made to the Armenian Relief Society Hollywood chapter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martinez, did you have an adjourning motion?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of my dear friend Arthur Lee Brodas, who passed away Wednesday, November 14th of this year. Arthur lived in the community of Pacoima for his entire life. He was a proud, a proud product of Pacoima. He attended Pacoima Elementary, Charles McClay Middle School, San Fernando High School, and Los Angeles Valley College. As the LA Times wrote back in 1997, and it still rings true today, the name Brodas is synonymous with the community and religious activism. Arthur was one of 10 children of Reverend Hillary T. and Rosa L. Brodas, who came to Pacoima from Arkansas, or Kansas, I'm sorry, in 1940s. His mother and father sank deep roots into the area and became known for their community activism and service. His parents founded the San Fernando Valley chapter of the NAACP and the Calvary Baptist Church in 1955. Five of his siblings became ministers and founded their passion at the pulpit. Arthur, however, found his passion through gospel music. Arthur was a director and musician for the Calvary Baptist Choir and the Pacoima Choir. His alumni network spanned the entire country with hundreds of singers and musicians. He received numerous awards for his directing, including the National Convention of Gospel choirs and choruses, and Director of the Year as well. Arthur was, had performed throughout the entire world through his career. I remember when I started my activism over 25 years ago, when I first met Arthur, we were fighting the proliferation of bars and alcohol in Pacoima. And I remember as a high school student marching up and down Van Nuys Boulevard on the weekends, trying to take back our community from the proliferation of alcohol and bars that saturated some, most of the northeast San Fernando Valley. And we would hold up picket signs and make them at his house, and we would go up and down marching and protesting some of these bars and liquor stores to get some of this awfulness out of our neighborhoods. When the gang epidemic took over the communities of Pacoima and the surrounding areas, we took to the streets to demand to take our community back. That's who Arthur was. His activism and passion was infectious. He was the executive director of the Pacoima Community Youth Cultural Center, which also led efforts to fight the proliferation of bars up and down Van Nuys Boulevard. He would then lead all, hundreds of people in marches every single weekend as well. All of the goal was to make sure that the community was a better place for all of us to grow up. He did countless and countless meetings to try to get our communities to get along, our communities to fight back, and our communities to be heard from elected officials. Arthur's selfless dedication to the community was indispensable and thankless, and came from his heart. But most recently, he was recovering from two major surgeries in the span of nine days and one that he had had six months later. And just like the comeback kid, like, which is what his wife used to call him, he made a full recovery and came back stronger. And just as quickly, Arthur began attending community meetings again. He was listening and providing feedback to, of stakeholders. I remember seeing him at Mama Padilla Services in Mary Macule at about a month. I remember seeing him at Mama Padilla's services in Mary Macule about a month ago. And on Sunday, November eleventh, a couple of days before he died, he stood in the pulpit of Calvary Baptist Church, and for the last time, he led the people in worship and song. I know his voice will be singing in the heavens, and he will surely be missed. For those of you who are interested in attending his services, they're going to be held on Friday, November twenty-third. The viewing is from nine a.m. to eleven p.m., and services will begin promptly at eight a.m. at Calvary Baptist Church at twelve, nine, twenty-eight, Vaughan Street in Pacoima. He is preceded by his daughter Janet, his parents, his three siblings, Reverend Alicia Brodas Duncan, Apostle William Brodas, and Reverend Cecilia Brodas. He's survived by his loving wife Deborah Brodas and his daughter Leanne Simone Brodas, his granddaughters, Area Jeanette Carrington, Simone, and his six siblings and his Calvary Baptist Church and choir family. My friend, I will miss you. May you rest in peace.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for so eloquently capturing all of the service and work of, of Arthur Brodas. And, you know, the Brodas family has had such a longstanding tradition of service in, in the community of Pacoima and in the greater northeast San Fernando Valley. And they've just had a series of tragedies and losses very recently, in the last few years. And I know Arthur had been recovering, had been very frail, but just came back really strong. And it was, it was a shock to, to have learned about his passing, but his activism and his legacy will forever live on in the community of Pacoima. There's so many individuals that have been touched by his service and will continue to serve in his legacy, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Harris.
Councilwoman Martinez, I would love to be added on, with your permission. The Brodas family has had so many challenges recently, and so our hearts go out to them. I actually had family members who sang in his choirs, as he do organize choirs around Southern California. And the Brodas family, and Arthur in particular, I can remember as a little kid, if you're African-American and you wanted to do something in the valley, you had to get a Brodas on the phone before you went there to have a connection. And so they're truly one of the anchor families of Southern California immigrating here from, from the south. And so we send our deepest condolences.
Thank you for that. I actually went through Valley Leadership Institute, VLI, with Brodas, with Reverend Brodas, in the year two thousand, I think it was. Very special. So with that, do we have any, yes?
Added as a signatory to the, to the adjournment as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I think it might be, it would be great and appropriate to, to add all members to that one, perhaps, as one of the special, but yeah, we do all, but, okay. Thank you. With that, colleagues, do we have any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, I wish to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving and a very safe Thanksgiving. And that adjourns this meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you so much.
What I enjoy most is being able to fabricate and create and produce items literally from just a concept or an idea that's placed on a piece of paper, or even an image that you see on a, on a screen. American Furniture Manufacturer supplies furniture for a lot of big-name hotels in the Los Angeles market and all throughout California. We focus mainly on commercial clients, and to make it commercial, it needs to be very, very durable, very high-quality. My father, Harry, started this company in two thousand and four. I personally joined the company in two thousand and eight. As vice president, my day-to-day tasks include everything that you need to do to run a business, reviewing design, scheduling, and coordinating logistics, as well as accounting and anything else you can think of. Most of the things that I learned and our success now has been through experience and on-the-job experience. I would say what makes AFM Contract unique is the fact that we're very punctual, very transparent, and cause conscientious to the client. American Furniture Manufacturer would have sixty-five employees in California altogether. Internationally, in Indonesia and in China, where we also have factories, goals combined can range up to the thousands. We mainly ship through the port of L.A. Per month, approximately, we import about thirty to forty containers. We were drawn to Pomona, California, because the property in this area was quite large and financially obtainable. My wife and I enjoy cooking in our spare time. When you're cooking, you can only focus on cooking. You get some sort of like meditation or peace through that. I would say there's nothing I dislike about my job. As challenging or as tough as the day would get, whenever you go through these challenges, you can only grow and learn from it. I find great gratification in working for a family business. At the end of the day, any success or any growth that you have is towards the growth and success for your family, which is also in turn helping out the community and creating job opportunities for new employees. That's where I get gratification.
The elephants in Africa, we hear the stories on this show, and I guess I'm becoming a softie at heart because I'm, I'm moved, I'm almost speechless and saddened by what I've heard from you. And thank goodness, there are organizations that are fighting on behalf of those who have no voice. This is, you know, since December twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-three, we've had an act in place to preserve those who are voiceless, the endangered species of this wonderful creation we've inherited. I'm sorry to end kind of on this note with this show, but it happened with the elephant show. I just get very emotional when I hear about losing such magnificent creatures.
Well, I do think there is, there is hope, and much has been restored because of the Endangered Species Act. And we do have the potential, it was, it was an act that was intended to, to end the kind of, the kind of political games that were, that enabled a special interest to wipe out wildlife so much before. And it's a real struggle, and we intend to win it. We intend to win it for the Mexican gray wolf to recover, and for the ecosystem that the, that the wolves help to support.
Viewers should go to your website and for the Center of Biological Diversity to learn how they can help, too.
Absolutely. Thank you for joining us, for Alexandra and myself. Thank you to Michael Robinson for being a voice for so many endangered species in this world, important for all of us. Thank you for joining us on Earth Talk today.
We'll see you next time.
Thank you, Peter Ann Alexandra.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel thirty-five. Our city, our channel. A major challenge of the twenty-first century is to keep enough energy and water flowing. We can do it through conserving and cultivating clean sources of each.
Most of us think we have a pretty good understanding about energy, but what is it really? Energy is the capacity to do work. Energy can neither be created nor destroyed, but it can be transformed with a device called a transducer, like this Los Angeles Department of Water and Power windmill. The conversion is not perfect, generating heat through friction and power line transmission, but energy itself is never lost. Energy keeps flowing. There are many kinds of energy, but they all fall into two categories: potential energy and kinetic energy. Stored energy is called potential energy, like the electricity stored in this battery. By hooking up this meter, we cause the needle to move, a form of kinetic energy. Kinetic energy is moving energy. Potential energy can be stored chemically, mechanically, in an atom's nucleus, or by gravity. Here, energy has been stored by placing the ball at the top of this ramp. When water flows downhill, it releases kinetic energy. Kinetic energy is the energy of movement, whether it's mechanical energy, waves, heat, sound, the movement of electrons, which we call electricity or light. All living organisms depend on an external source of energy to survive, develop, and reproduce, whether plants that draw energy from the sun, or animals that consume food. Civilization only developed after humans could rely on a dependable source of potential energy stored as grown food. Today, the Earth has to support its population approaching seven billion people by cultivating sustainable sources of both energy and fresh water. The origin of most of our energy is the sun. It's a furnace powered by nuclear fusion, where hydrogen isotopes are fused into helium. That's the identical process at the heart of a hydrogen bomb. The sun releases the energy of one hundred billion H-bombs every second. The only reason the sun doesn't explode is the same force that keeps the Earth in orbit around it, the sun's gravity. Since energy can't be created or destroyed, what is the source of the sun's energy? Its mass. Scientist Albert Einstein recognized that mass can be fully transformed into energy with his famous equation E equals M C squared. Here, E is energy, M is mass, and C is the speed of light times itself. Since light travels at the fastest speed in our universe, one hundred and eighty-six thousand miles per second, a little bit of mass can make a lot of energy. The sun's fuel is hydrogen. It burns a tremendous amount, but don't worry, there's enough to last another six billion years. When solar radiation reaches Earth, it's felt as light and heat. Animals can't use this energy directly, but plants do through a process called photosynthesis. Through photosynthesis, plants capture water, carbon dioxide, and the sun's energy to make the oxygen we breathe and carbohydrates like sugars, starches, and cellulose for the plants themselves to use. Three hundred million years ago, in a wet, swampy world, the Earth's plants turned sunlight into chemical energy, thrived, then died, to decompose on forest or ocean floors. Over millennia, the buildup of organic material compressed and heated by the layers of the Earth created three familiar forms of hydrocarbon fossil fuel: coal to solid, oil to liquid, and natural gas. The potential energy in fossil fuel is nothing more than converted sunlight locked in by the chemical processing of ancient plants. These hydrocarbons were made with the hydrogen from the water the plants soaked up and the carbon from the carbon dioxide the plants breathed in. There are significant problems with using fossil fuel. The first is that it causes pollution.
Well, right now, we get our, our power from a number of sources. Coal is number one. We're at forty-four percent right now. It's obviously polluting the environment. Coal basically is one of the dirtiest types of energy, and there's health concerns. We have a future goal to phase out the use of coal.
Burning coal produced London's killer fogs.
It was very, very dark. It was almost like twilight. People were not driving. I could hear like ambulance bells ringing. People with masks on their mouths and people holding towels and rags and things over just to breathe in. And it was just horrible.
Many coal mines remove whole mountain tops, clearing thriving ecosystems, leaving barren moonscapes. Most coal burned in the U.S. generates electricity. Power plants now scrub coal smoke, but coal is one of the largest contributors of greenhouse gas emissions. Since coal remains the dirtiest fossil fuel, the L.A. D W P will ultimately eliminate its use. Oil is mostly used for transportation. It has caused L.A.'s ongoing battle with smog.
And then we had smog over here in the fifties and sixties. It used to burn. My eyes would burn and my throat would burn. When I first came here, there was no smog regulation essentially on cars.
On land, oil pumps vent nitrous oxide, a major component of smog. Offshore, in a more hazardous environment, the potential for damage is far worse. In April two thousand and ten, the Deepwater Horizon Oil Rig exploded, killing eleven men, gushing the biggest oil spill in American history.
It's a limited resource. We're getting a lot of it from the foreign countries.
We import sixty percent of our oil by tanker.
That puts us at a very disadvantageous position should we have a disagreement with these countries. And it is in our best interest to locally generate as much of the energy we need within the borders of the United States.
Tanker oil spills have declined since the nineteen eighty-nine Exxon Valdez disaster, but they still occur, like the two thousand and seven collision that fouled San Francisco Bay. Natural gas is the cleanest fossil fuel. It's mostly used to power industry, although in our homes, we rely upon it for cooking, heating, and drying clothes. Today, the biggest fossil fuel hazards go back to the original process that created them. What happens to the carbon dioxide those ancient plants first captured through photosynthesis? When we burn fossil fuel, the C O two is discharged back into the air. Coal releases the most carbon dioxide, natural gas the least.
Excess C O two wasn't much of a problem when this coal-burning locomotive first hit the tracks in the eighteen sixties. Back then, the entire population of the world was equal to present-day China's. In the hundred and forty-six years since, the world's population has increased fivefold.
As the Earth's population has grown, increasing carbon dioxide and other pollutants are trapping more of the sun's energy, preventing less from escaping back to space. This layer of gas acts like the glass in a greenhouse, reflecting heat back to the surface, causing our planet's temperature to rise, a process we call global warming. Two thousand and nine capped the hottest decade on record. In two thousand and seven, the Arctic Ice Cap melted to a record low. As ice melts, seas rise. In the not-too-distant future, these Malibu homeowners might have to move to houseboats. Coastal areas like New Orleans and South Florida are threatened. Many attribute the increasing severity of hurricanes to global warming. A two thousand and eight study blames human-caused global warming for the American West's current drought. The ultimate reason for getting past fossil fuels is that they are a finite resource. It took millions of years to make them. They are non-renewable, which means once they are used up, they are gone. The time of inexpensive fossil fuels is over. Although electrical energy itself is clean, how we generate it determines how environmentally friendly or green it is. In most power plants, the potential chemical energy in coal or natural gas is released through combustion. It becomes the kinetic energy of heat, which turns water to steam. Steam forces the metal blades of a turbine to spin in a magnetic field to produce electricity. What about nuclear? Because the fuel isn't burned, it doesn't produce greenhouse gases. Neutrons bombard enriched uranium, so that the nuclei are split in a process called controlled nuclear fission. Mass is converted to energy, which heats water that turns steam turbines. There seems to be enough uranium to last a hundred years, so why not build more nuclear plants? Less than a fifth of U.S. electricity now comes from nuclear power. There are problems with nuclear power. A chain reaction is a delicate juggling act. Split too few atoms, and the process stalls. Too many risks the uncontrolled nuclear reaction seen in an atomic bomb.
Well, nuclear, it's a very high-cost installation. The fuels are relatively cheap, but they still haven't figured out what to do with this, with the, with the waste.
Some suggest burying waste in the desert, but no state wants it because the waste will stay radioactive for thousands of years. The safest and cleanest way to generate power is through renewable energy that's naturally replenished. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power has long been a pioneer in generating green electric power. Let's see how it all began. Hoover Dam was the world's largest when built. Its construction was made possible by L.A. Its construction was made possible by LADWP's agreement to purchase power from the dam.
And that was the first big electrical project to L.A.
During the Great Depression, its construction offered hope in a time of despair. 16,000 men and women worked on the project in harsh conditions. More than 100 died during construction. In 1936, the gates opened. The potential energy in the water stored behind the dam started the hydroelectric turbine spinning. Ever since, the dam has generated an average of 3.5 billion kilowatt-hours of carbon-free electricity each year. At first, the dam generated 95% of LADWP's power. Today, it produces just 2.5% of L.A.'s electric needs. The dam created Lake Mead, a major water supply for the parched Southwest. It once held so much water that it could have covered the entire state of Pennsylvania to a depth of one foot. Although Hoover Dam is not contributing to global warming, it might fall victim to it. Without an increase of rainfall in the Colorado River Basin or a drop in water consumption, there might not be enough water in Lake Mead to generate power past the end of the decade. Other sources of the city's hydroelectric power are the 12 plants along the Los Angeles aqueduct. They use the drop-in height from the water's mountain source to generate electricity along the way. Are there other renewable energy options? The biggest population growth in the United States is in the Southwest. Although it has a scarce water supply, it is rich in one abundant form of energy: solar.
Southern California is the ideal place to go solar. It has more people and more sunshine than anywhere else in the United States.
It's a great technology. The prices have come down about 30% over the last two years for the parts.
Photovoltaic cells are layers of silicon semiconductors. When daylight hits a solar cell, some of the sun's photons are absorbed, knocking electrons free, which then flow in a current. By hooking your solar power system up to the grid, you can have electricity when the sun is not shining. And on a sunny day, when you're away, your meter could run backwards to lower your electric bill.
Couple months ago, I installed solar on my house, and it's wiped out 80% of my electric bill. Water and power has some of the best incentives in the state.
The federal government then gives you a 30% credit on the difference. The system pays for itself in reduced energy bills. If you look at these bills over about eight years, they pay for, the system pays for itself. And then in year nine, you start making money.
I think everybody should be going solar, going green, anything in any way we can to not use up our natural resources as fast as we are.
LADWP is aggressively moving to install solar on city facilities like public libraries, municipal office buildings, and the convention center. The utility is on track to generate more than a third of its energy from green renewable sources by the year 2020. Wind is another green power source. The Earth's winds are also generated by the sun's energy. These turbines are the opposite of fans. The wind's kinetic energy spins the blades, which are connected to an electric generator. About 100 miles north of Los Angeles, LADWP has developed a major new wind project, Pine Tree Wind Farm. Towers stand as high as a 20-story building, rising above the ground's surface drag to take advantage of mountain wind speed. Blades stretch 300 feet across, as long as a football field. Turbines are rotated by computer to constantly face the wind. Wind energy now powers a bit more than 1% of U.S. electric capacity, but it's the nation's fastest-growing energy source. Pine Tree is the largest city-owned wind project in America, cutting 200,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions annually. The Earth supplies another form of clean energy: geothermal. It's mining the heat that remains from when our planet was a molten ball 4 billion years ago. Water is pumped miles into the Earth until it boils. The steam generated turns turbines on the surface. Some plants harness natural steam. Geothermal power is very clean, emitting steam and trace gases. One of the most underutilized forms of renewable energy is biomass, organic matter that can be converted to fuel.
We're using biofuels now, which is methane coming from landfills.
The tire, which means Terminal Island Renewable Energy Project, will involve injecting the biosolids into the depleted gas reservoirs. There, the idea is that they will take advantage of the high temperature and pressures internal in the earth and create methane gas.
There's a new technology that the department's using for biomass, and that is, they can take this methane now and clean it up to the point where you can actually inject it into natural gas pipelines. And so we're buying some of this biogas that's shipped through our pipelines to our journey facility, and it doesn't require building a generator at the, at the landfill. So it's a very quick way and a very easy way to get biofuels burned and turned into electricity.
You thought it would be your dream house until you got your water and power bills. Where can you cut back?
Right now is a really exciting time when you think about energy. There's so many things that people can do just that are low cost, no cost around their house and make a big difference for everybody.
A home's energy consumption can easily make it the biggest greenhouse gas emitter you own.
We should always be aware. We're surrounded by nature and that our, our actions have an impact, for good or for bad, on the natural world.
People should be conserving energy because it helps preserve the environment and it also saves money in the long run for everybody.
We're using too much energy. We're gonna have to do an energy audit.
What's that?
That's where we're gonna take a snapshot, and take a look at what energy we're using in the house.
The department actually has an online version for residential folks on their website, which is www.ladwp.com.
To prepare for an energy audit, make a list of problems of which you're aware.
Whoa, Mom, look, there is a draft.
Okay, well, let's make a note.
Assemble your year's utility bills and know your summer and winter thermostat settings. Let's look at some of the changes that you could make, beginning with the simplest.
It's kind of like a car. You don't turn on your car and leave it idling in the driveway. You turn it on, you use it, and you turn it off. That's how electricity should be, too. If you don't need it, turn it off. That includes lights and air conditioning. Sometimes you need a little help turning off that air conditioner, so a programmable thermostat might be a good option because it's, it's built around your schedule. Turn up the air conditioning to 2 degrees during the summer. That'll save you 12% over the summer cooling season. If you're going to use electricity, use it as efficiently as possible. For example, on your lighting, instead of using incandescent lighting, you use compact fluorescent lighting.
Most of the output of an incandescent bulb is not light. It is heat, a waste of energy. Instead of heating a filament to the point that metal glows white-hot, fluorescent lights merely need to excite gas in a tube.
Compact fluorescent lights are one of the best deals around because they use 1/4 the power of a normal incandescent light bulb and lasts seven to 10 times as long.
CFLs cost more, but last longer.
When you get a compact fluorescent bulb, when that thing burns out, you've probably saved about $34 in, in energy savings. LED is new technology that's just come out. It's actually supposed to be 1/10th the power of incandescent bulbs and lasts 50 to 100 times longer. The only problem with them right now is that they're pretty expensive.
Another way to save on lighting is to install skylights.
Well, the skylight is designed to bring in natural light from outside for free. It can bring in the equivalent of a 300-watt bulb.
The biggest energy expense in a home is typically heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, HVAC. Use drapes and windows for climate control, opening drapes on winter days to let heat in, opening windows on summer evenings to let heat out.
Insulation basically keeps all the cold and hot from outside from getting into your living space, which makes it a lot easier on your air conditioner or your heater.
The energy savings for, for heating and cooling a house, the largest factor is the insulation. Open-beam ceiling, they have blow foam that goes inside the ceiling that they can seal off, but the most typical for the, for a home's vertical and the ceiling is the spun fiberglass.
It's rated by R factor. The higher the number, the better it insulates.
In the walls, from the floor to the ceiling, goes between anywhere from 13 to 19. Ceilings are generally between 25 and 30.
If you have a lot of losses to, because you have very little insulation or no insulation, you're wasting money because it's just going right through and out to the outside.
So now we're gonna caulk the home and gonna keep the colder out and keep all the warm air in. So I'll use the caulk gun.
Plug up the hole so you don't have air coming in from the outside. Weather strip your windows. Weather strip your, your doors. It's cost a few dollars for weather stripping and pays big dividends.
The best time to insulate is when you are building or renovating. It is more difficult to install insulation later. Then your choices will be limited.
One of the big culprits of energy loss is windows.
If you don't have dual-pane windows yet, install them.
An energy-efficient window package is the glass package that goes around the window and the ceiling of that glass package. These are all dual-pane. The impregnated coating on the low-y, high-energy-efficient glass is impregnated magnesium that's a coating that's a film that goes on both sides of the glass. In the long run, they're the, the best investment for a homeowner.
Qualifying windows can get a rebate of a dollar per square foot from LADWP. In Southern California, one of our biggest energy costs is cooling our homes in the summer. Air conditioners are either installed centrally or set in specific rooms.
For example, on central air conditioning, if you buy a, a central air conditioning unit that's 14C or better, we'll, we'll give you $100 per unit. We also have incentives for room air conditioners that are Energy Star. If you're gonna make investments in appliances, go Energy Star. They're typically 20% better than, than the standard grade.
For more rebates and conservation programs, go to ladwp.com and click on the rebate section. They conjure up images of exotic locales, but they work well here, too. Ceiling fans are another way to save money while keeping cool or warm. Buy a fan that is Energy Star rated with an efficient motor and enhanced blade design. Better models can control fan speed and light intensity with the remote control. In the summer, have the blades blow toward you. Reversing the blades in the winter will draw hot air down from the ceiling. You can reserve your air conditioning for just the hottest days. Even then, you can save money with a fan because the wind chill effect will allow you to set your air conditioning to a higher temperature. Ceiling fans can save you as much as 40% in air conditioning costs and 10% in heating. Another way to help cool your home is by planting trees to shade it. Trees combat global warming by cutting your cooling needs. They also offset your carbon generation directly by drawing CO2 from the air. Most trees soak up 300 pounds of carbon each year. If you are an electrical customer of the LADWP, you can get free shade trees delivered right to your home.
Here's how the program works. There's orientation class that they can take, either online or in person, so it's basically to understand what trees would be good for their application and how to use.